Seven bucks, so I'm gonna call this meeting in order. I have plenty of time. With the superintendent academic awards.
Hey, this is the most exciting part of the evening, right, sorry. Uh, we'll start with Broadway, Mrs. D and Andrew, Mrs. Roberts, go ahead.
Louis Powell, come on in.
They go Louis.
All right, dear Winston Gouarts School Board, it's my pleasure to present Louis Powell, the Superintendent of Work within our Broadway Elementary School. He is the son of Ethan and Eric Powell and is First Regent of Broadway Elementary School. Louis has many qualities and characteristics which makes him an outstanding candidate for this honor. Louis is an excellent student who is self-motivated, curious, and involved in learning just as strong in all the core academic subjects, and he enjoys being at school and learning new things. Louis has superior work habits, putting forth his very, uh, very best efforts, which makes his work thoughtful, neat, and accurate. Louis is an example of outstanding citizenship. His classmates consider him a friend because of his thoughtful and kind behavior. Uh, Louis is responsible and can be depended upon to do schoolwork, homework, and do various other jobs and errands throughout the school in a respectful manner that has others recognizing what a great student he is. He keeps his desk and personal belongings organized and is always prepared for class, and he is also an incredibly creative artist, and I look forward to all of his amazing works of art. And I'm so proud of Louis, and I know that his parents are very proud of him, too. I am sure that the characteristics that have made Louis deserving of this award will continue to be positive and beneficial for him and his future academic years. The Winston Gouarts School District is fortunate to have students like Louis, and I'm thankful to have the opportunity to have him in my classroom this year. Congratulations and way to go, Louis.
Even the good word, Louis. Looking Glass, Mrs. Webber.
Excited to introduce Cara Black, Looking Glass's pre-K teacher, and to bring up Rexton White, who may or may not.
Dear Mr. Wilson and members of the Winston Gouarts School District, I am thrilled to award Rexton White the Looking Glass Superintendent's Award. Rexton is the son of Gabrielle Kelly. Rexton is such a wonderful child. He has grown and learned so much over the last two years. He is capable of amazing work. He is so eager to learn about many things. He is inquisitive and a wonderful problem solver. He works hard, and if he doesn't do his best work, he will be the first to admit it and ask to redo it, even if that means using some of his free playtime. He is an excellent example to his peers of being a helpful and thoughtful student and friend. If someone is sad or alone, he is the first one to notice and go check on them. If he cannot help them solve their problem, he will offer a hug and bring them to a teacher. He is a wonderful example of a social problem solver and will help peers work through problems, encouraging them through the process. You can see just how much he cares about our school family. Rexton loves being outside, at school and at home. When he is at home, he goes on many adventures with his family and comes back to tell all of the school friends about it. When his friends ask him about his adventures, he focuses on the safety and tells them all how he was safe during these many adventures. You can tell in the classroom how safety-focused Rexton is. If a parent is being unsafe, Rexton has the skills to tell them and explain a safer way for them to be successful. This is just one of the many ways Rexton leads by an example. If there is a mess flamed out, Rexton is always the one to volunteer to clean it up, even if it wasn't his mess to begin with. Rexton, your determination and empathy for others is an inspiration to so many, myself included. I am so thankful to be your teacher this year and see the amazing things you are capable of. I am so excited to see what the rest of this year has in store, keeping you in sword to new heights. We will be cheering for you the whole way. You are a wonderful addition to our school family. We love and appreciate your hard work, Rex, and best wishes, Ms. Block.
And last but not least, McGovern Elementary, Mrs. Norton.
This is France and, all right. All right, Macy Mercer. Have Jenna do it. It's an honor to be able to nominate Margaret Macy Mercer, the daughter of Kelly and Michael Mercer. I tease Macy last year quite often, actually, that I was gonna retain her just so I could teach her for one more year. Since I was given the chance to teach at 34th Middle Land for this year, the teacher became back and I get to be her teacher one more time. Macy is a joy to have in class. She loves to learn and always gives it her all. Macy can be counted on to lend a hand, encourage her classmates, and hand out smiles everyone she comes into contact with. Everyone is her friend, and she treats them with kindness and respect at all times. Her friendship even includes our class pet, Ollie. She's the only one to ever read him stories, and I think he actually enjoys it, too. Macy will give up her turn if she notices another student has not had a chance at a game. I've observed her doing this numerous times. Her kind heart is evident in every aspect of her life. If kindness were measured in snowplains, Macy would be starting a wizard. I feel blessed to have Macy in my class this year at McGovern. I would like to thank her family for raising such an amazing, kind-hearted, respectful young lady. She'll be able to accomplish everything she sets her heart to and her mind to. I look forward to seeing all those amazing accomplishments.
This is our DHS student report. Good evening. The Culinary Class hosted their second annual Culinary Thanksgiving. All Culinary students joined together to share a multi-course meal that they prepared. Over a hundred students and staff were able to share in the meal, and it was lots of fun. National Honor Society had their induction ceremony and inducted nine new members. FFA is having their first-ever barn showdown tomorrow night from seven to ten at the barn. There will be some of their teaching line dancing. Winter sports has started for our girls and boys basketball teams and boys and girls wrestling teams. Boys' basketball teams, boys or both basketball teams have tournaments over winter break as well as both wrestling teams.
So we'll do a brief intermission now for anybody that doesn't want to stay for the whole week. All right, we will back up with the superintendent report.
Okay, thank you for that. Think I missed a month with no pictures, but, um, so there's a lot of, a lot of exciting things happened here in the last two or three weeks in the district. You know, we had that short week of Thanksgiving, and so the first couple pictured, that first one there is McGovern Thanksgiving Parade. I wanna still get in the order, thunder, by any means, so I could let them talk about it. But that's a, that's a student that, um, I liked that picture because of the, the smile on my student's face. And speaking of Jett, it was a fantastic Macy Styles Thanksgiving Parade around McGovern. So a lot of, a lot of exciting things happened this week. That second one is the Looking Glass Thanksgiving Meal. If you haven't been out there for that, there's a picture of the main hall and they have the tables. And so that was a pretty amazing experience, spent some time out there with the Looking Glass folks. Sure Emily will speak to that, get in the order. And, um, just seeing those kids, all the students, and how they, how they behave and how grateful they were for that opportunity was, was super fun to hang out there. Mrs. D, Lisa, that's a picture of the SROs and a student that I found in the main office there. As I arrived, so I grabbed him, he was having some troubles. And so I was able to eat Thanksgiving Meal with, uh, with him, with the school resource officers, which turned out to be pretty fun. You can see the smile on his face, so it didn't look like that twenty minutes before that. He was pretty disgruntled, but we had a lot of fun with that. See, I all mentioned the DHS National Honor Society. I was excited to be invited to speak to that, to that group. And so there's a picture of the, uh, of the induction ceremony that night. Craig and his staff did a great job of inducting those National Honor Society kiddos. Weston Middle School Robotics Competition over at UCC. I don't have a lot of details in terms of like where we finished up with that, but I do know that they were excited. Dave, who couldn't be here tonight, was actually at that competition, was out at UCC. So a good opportunity for our kiddos. And then, I don't have a picture, I picked a picture of this, which is, uh, my apologies. But, um, I was able to attend the Winston Gouarts School Band and Choir Concert a couple of weeks ago, too. And so that was all the six, seven, and eight theaters looking at some Jeremy there. That was a lot of fun.
I like their concerts, I don't get to them very often anymore.
Yeah, yeah, that was, that was quite the, quite the feat, seeing the six, seven, and eight theaters informed, they're, they're super excited, so, um, just a lot of, a lot of stuff happening. It's fun to be able to get out and, um, and spend time with, with those kids.
Thanksgiving meal at the class looks cool, like all together, like, so many.
It was really fun, yeah. And you walk into the main door and it's just boom, straight shot all the way down, tables, kids, like class, I would imagine, um, yeah. And so I was actually walked the entire hall and sat down with pretty much every class and they made my way over with everything. And, yeah, just very calm, very peaceful, and, um, not what you'd expect at, you know, pre-K to six. So, um, it's really neat. What's that? Fifth, sorry. Pre-K to fifth. There were no sixth graders there. Yeah, and if you, yeah, if you have any questions, okay. I think that you want to ask about, we, we can move on. Enrollment updates, we're down to, so this time last year, twelve, one, twenty-three, we were twelve ninety-nine, uh, we're twelve ninety-seven, so holding strong. We've had a high of thirteen oh five, uh, thirteen oh five, and then, you know, the low of the twelve forty-six, which was on nine nine of this year. So actually, quite a ways up from where we started at the beginning of this year, but holding strong. You know, it's not where we've, you know, I think that we prefer to have some overseas. I think we're a hundred and ten in in terms of inner districts, we'll get to that in a second, but about a hundred and ten in and about ninety-two out, so good news.
For the director's report, um, we'll move on to items of discussion. Nine A, budget calendar, first reading. There's this calendar on there of the timeline for us to review.
Anything you wanna Mitch with that?
No, it's basically the same as last year, just, you know, with the calendar dates being on one state.
Uh, nine B, the Budget Committee for District Policy, DBEA. The Budget Committee should be comprised of five school board members and five budget committee members for a total of ten members. We currently have two open positions. Interested community members would need to file an application with the district, and the board would review and approve applicants at the January and or February board meeting. Know anybody interested?
And then in the packet, there's a, a template of the application. And also the releasing now for elections as well, so if you're interested.
Do you, do you have to live in the school district in order to be on the Budget Committee?
That's a good question.
Like you do with the school board.
Nine C, twenty twenty-four, coast and work groups.
Yeah, I do that, you know, the coast and work groups, so they're, um, last April, actually April twenty-four, they started in preparation for this legislative session. So we're getting ready to, January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, is the beginning of the legislative session for the budget. The governor is, um, we're, we're in a good spot right now. I think it was eleven point two billion for the public education. But that, last April twenty-four, coast of the Coalition of School Administrators put together work groups to, um, determine what was gonna be our legislative priorities for public education. So I just not gonna, it's a, it's quite a long document. There's a, from April up until now, just the last, uh, you know, eight months, a ton of work's gone into these work group sessions, and it's, it's a, it's a decent read, if you like to geek out on all things education. So the major, the major funding points, um, special education funding, uh, unfunded mandates, which is, you would, you know, a lot of legislative, um, you know, a lot of bills get approved that aren't funded, which just doesn't make a lot of sense. K-12 facilities, student mental and behavioral health, summer learning and expanded learning opportunities, early literacy, attendance, and then workforce diversity and hard-to-stuff assignments. So those are the ma, the major, um, legislative priorities that we're taking to the legislature in January to say, please fund these for public education. Like the entire package there, um, so I added that in there for you guys to review.
Yeah, field trip requests.
Yeah, field trips are starting, yeah, there, folks have been going on field trips. It's been exciting. And so there's quite a few there. Some of them have been, have already been happening, but eleven twenty-six, there's a twelve ten, so. The third and fourth grade go Coliseum, uh, they went and watched LES. Went and watched a Oregon State Women's Basketball Game, so. That's in the good, is that in the good of the order? Okay, that's telling you where the details, so. Then you can see that twelve seven was that robotics class and UCC competition that was in the superintendent's report, so.
It looks like, is it this Friday that DHS is applying to Winston Community Center? The DHS Band?
Yeah.
I'm still that thunder.
Yep, still that thunder.
Well, it's holiday events.
Yeah, and then on that note, there was the, um, Wade, or, you know, Weston area independence. Yeah, so there's some type of a community event at the Winston Community Center, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, the Christmas, um, Community Christmas.
Yep. Six to eight, I think it was.
I don't know the detail, on Facebook.
Um, after the consent agenda, we have a financial supplement.
Uh, property taxes are starting to come through, that's about the only difference in the whole year, and then we're about, we're about on track.
We have been minister, or, you know, change of schedule minutes from last time.
It looks good, I mean.
And C, personnel. Um, I'm bringing in front of Jeremiah Robbins, um, for AD Assistant Principal position at DHS effective December ninth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, ten D, recommended student transfer for the future school year.
That was, I think, considered for a packet as well as looking at what is the, yep, there's the, so total of a hundred and ten in and then seventy-three, I said ninety-two. It's close. So, and then it has a few, it looks like there was two for six outgoing from our district and then two incoming since our last meeting.
And E, donations. Um, it looks like there was a thousand dollar donation to Douglas High School's FFA program and three thousand dollars for the student scholarship fund, so four thousand dollars from Ron and Shirley Northcraft, so thank you to them.
They did this last year as well.
Anybody wanna make a motion to go down?
Oh, is Jeremiah, so he is gonna be, just like Jeff was, AD and Vice Principal?
Correct.
So that's, is that like fifty-fifty?
Seventy-five percent. Um, I'm not a direct, twenty-five percent, um, Vice Principal.
He's not here tonight? He's not here tonight?
I moved the Winston Gouarts School District Board of Directors to approve their consent agenda as presented.
One second.
I have a motion, a second, all in favor? Okay, moving on to action items. Uh, lemonade, resolution twenty twenty-four, twenty-five dash two, urban renewal plan for the city of Winston. City of Winston is requesting the approval of an urban renewal plan, which includes two building and renovation projects. All local taxing districts must meet approval, which includes unsold or in school districts. The urban renewal plan proposes constructing an evidence room and updating their city council chamber room. The district will not be contributing any funds towards these projects.
Yeah, so we, the city reached out to us, Thomas over at the city reached out to us when it goes to these resolutions for the urban renewal plan. And so we ran this up to legal, and so this document, the Resolution twenty twenty-four, twenty-five dash two, now therefore Winston Gouarts School District resolves as follows, section one and two, and it's just, we are approving, um, as, because we are a tax, like it says right there, we're a taxing district. We're just concurring with the inclusion of the city council chambers update and concurring with the inclusion of the police evidence room project. So no, no financial monetary cost to us.
So we really don't have to vote on it, right?
They say in order for them to be able to do their project, that we need to do it, we have to give them minutes.
Okay, I moved Winston Dillard School District Board of Directors to approve the Resolution twenty twenty-four, twenty-five dash two, Winston Urban Renewal Plan.
One second.
A motion in a second, um, all in favor? And eleven B, uh, OSBA Resolution Number One to amend the twenty twenty-three OSBA bylaws. Oh, yeah, we've pushed, oh, yeah, we were, yeah.
We spoke about, oh, we waited till, yeah, so you guys had a chance to look through those. So, that first one.
Mostly the, is this the first one that's mostly new caucuses?
The, the new caucus is the second one.
It's the second one.
Yeah, the, that's the.
It's the first one that membership.
Yeah, the first one is like the, all these red track pages about just the actual bylaws themselves. That's that first resolution. Just to amend that. So I don't know if you guys wanna go through, um, you know, each recommended motion, what are the time to do that? Do that?
I went through the stuff, I didn't see anything to.
I read it, I didn't.
There wasn't anything.
New wording here.
Yeah, just updated, usually just legal update, wording updates.
Do we need to make three motions and three, or can we roll it all up, I guess it doesn't matter?
I think we just, just recommended motion for each one.
Yeah.
I moved the Winston Gouarts School District Board of Directors, uh, to approve OSB Resolution Number One as presented, second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor? Uh, eleven C, OSBA Resolution Number Two to amend OSBA due schedule.
Uh, make everything to Winston Dillard School District Board of Directors to approve OSB A Resolution Two.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, who's there? Anybody have any discussions?
Okay, so we have a second. Oh, you got a second, okay.
All in favor?
Yeah, so, and I said that the third, that was actually the third one. Yeah, so that, that was the due schedule, so you guys are on it.
Um, eleven D, OSBA Resolution Number Three to amend Oregon School Boards', School Boards' Associations bylaws relating to composition of the Board of Directors. This resolution approves designating an Oregon School Board Members Pride Caucus representative as a voting member of the OSBA Board of Directors and Legislative Policy Committee.
I'm going to Winston Dillard School District Board of Directors to approve OSB Resolution Three as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor? Um, eleven E, access control doors at Winston Middle School and Douglas High School gym through the COGS grant and capital projects. Description is install access control to doors and vestibules at Winston Middle School and the old DHS gym. Total amount, twelve thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and four cents, payable to ednetics using the COGS grant and capital project fund.
Is this the last thing they have to do to it?
Yeah, yeah, we finally made it there, the, the, at the high school. We've been waiting a little bit longer, but yeah, the old gym, that new vestibule, the old gym, and then Winston Middle School's new vestibule, where those lock, they'll have the, the access control doors, yeah, will be operational.
And we're gonna do Looking Glass at Montgomery Elementary, so.
Really, really exciting for, for us.
Cause I was there the other day, they have practice, and it's pretty good.
Yeah, the vestibule?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and then, as I said, that right now, just, they. Yeah, and then, as I said, that right now, just, they even just have an vestibule, people would just assume that the doors are locked. So, and maybe they're not, you can just lock up and open them, but don't tell me all that.
Yeah, I never even tried, you used to go straight to the window.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But now we're, they'll be fully operational as soon as we get them.
From the Winston Dillon School District Board of Directors approved the access controls for the vestibule doors at Winston Middle School and Douglas High School for a total amount of twelve thousand eight hundred sixty-five dollars and four cents payable to ednetics.
That's different. We have a motion, okay, any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Right. Um, eleven F, district-wide field maintenance tractor and attachments, um, from the general funding capital targets. Uh, purchase vent track, Kubota diesel four fifty-two O Y tractor with elevator, boomers and renovator. Total cost is fifty-three thousand eight hundred ninety-three dollars and sixty cents payable to Turf Star Inc. Turf Star has an organ procurement agreement through Omniav. This will replace contracting field maintenance services and will pay for itself in less than two years and will save the district about thirty thousand dollars each year after that.
Yeah, cause after they tore that up year before last, in last year where they hit it in the rain.
Should have been more.
I talked to Jim about that, and I'm excited about this.
It's, it's.
We should be doing it, you know, it's what I talked to him about.
The Pacific sports turf, that outfit, that we've been using at Portland, yeah, so. I think Ken can speak to how much we're thirty-five thousand a year, we're thinking about that.
New year, fall, fall and spring maintenance.
Maybe we can hire out to some other schools?
Yeah, Winston Dillon's still gonna have it, it's coming with the, all of the, uh, the attachments, yeah, so it'll have attachments, so, you know, the blade and the drag, so we can, we can work on the infield, softball field, baseball field.
Oh, good.
It's, uh, pretty exciting. I move the Winston Dillon School District Board of Directors, you know, district-wide field maintenance tractor and for a total amount of fifty-three thousand eight hundred ninety-three dollars and sixty cents payable to the Turf Star Inc. Excuse me.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any additional discussion? All in favor? Um, eleven G, D H S ag barn concrete drain with the High School Success Grant and M ninety-eight funds. Install D H S barn concrete drain for a total cost of seven thousand one hundred and thirty dollars payable to S and R Construction using the High School Success and M ninety-eight funds. If there was three bins, then this was to that.
Is, is that in between both barns or, or is this a different spot?
It's in, in between the main barn and, yeah, so.
I thought we fixed that last year.
Uh, it was, it was, it was a fix, um.
It was a ditch.
It was, it was a ditch, and then, um, as the kids are moving, uh, materially in and out, it, it fills up, they're trying to, you know, keep it clean, so this'll, this'll prevent that.
Move Winston Dillon School District Board of Directors to approve the installation of a concrete drain for D H S A G barn, ag barn for the total amount of seven thousand one hundred and thirty dollars payable to S and R Family Construction. Second.
Motion in a second, please Kevin. All in favor?
All right.
All right. Great, uh, eleven H, D H S metals wood, wood siding and roll-up door with the High School Success and M ninety-eight funds. Uh, this is installing metal siding and roll-up door on the D H S Woods and Metals Building using High School Success and M ninety-eight funds. Total amount is nineteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars payable to S and R Construction.
Are these new doors, or are they just replacing, or are they?
So it's, uh, so we pause to the high school on the metal shop side, where there's gonna be a, a roll-up door where the fence is, oh, okay, it's gonna be framed in, and then all that wood is old lapped wood, it's gonna be all gone, it's gonna be all metal, but match the rest of the floor.
Yeah.
It's gonna go away around. So yes, we'll have a roll-up door, you'll be able to drive all the way through it now to.
You have to stop on an additional man door, the third.
Yeah, oh, and then you have to put through the end of it.
You have a motion in a second?
I move, uh, Winston Dillon School District Board of Directors to approve their construction of, is that the one?
Yeah, yep.
Of, uh, of, uh, metal siding and roll-up door for a total of nineteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars payable to S and R Family Construction.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any? On passes. Uh, eleven, uh, D H S greenhouse excavation and gravel, high school, using the High School Success Grant and M ninety-eight funds. Expedition and gravel in front of the D H S greenhouse using High School Success and M ninety-eight funds. Total amount is nine thousand five hundred dollars payable to Alala Onsite Services.
So how big area, is it a pretty good sized area in the area, or just a?
No, it's you, everything, we're gonna clean it up, probably get just mud going in there right now. So it's, yeah, so they'll put the big rock down, then they'll come back, you'll put the fabric down, big rock and make it all.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm the quotes, um, um, that are in the package, it actually tells you how big everything is, there's pictures of the tractor, I don't know, that's reasonable.
I move the Winston Dillon School District Board of Directors to approve the excavation gravel in front of the D H S greenhouse for the amount of nine thousand five hundred dollars payable to Alala Onsite Service.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
I don't think we have anybody signed up, that's the only one, so. Move on to good of the order. Frank, you wanna start us off?
Sure, um, I just, seeing six o'clock, our, our, uh, Christmas choir concert started up there, so I went there before I could care. Uh, it's always fun to go up there and see, see students in, in a whole different light when they're up there singing, it's just, it just blows me away every year when I go up there to see and hear those kids sing, so it's really fun to go up there and enjoy listening to that, so. Uh, we also did our, our Thanksgiving, uh, culinary, put it on, uh, it was really neat to share to go in there. But like I said, it was kind of some kids, and when I was in there sitting with Casey looking around, everybody was sitting around eating, it was all made from the, from the culinary, it was done, and, right. But I was sitting there watching, you know, you see all these different kids sitting around in different groups and you're seeing different, like, holiday prayers, things going on. And for that whole hour to ten minutes, I was sitting there looking at Casey going, hey, what did you not see here right now? Because we're gonna be like, it's crazy, what are you thinking, what are you talking about? You see a cell phone out right now? For that hour, ten minutes, those kids just talked, had fun, ate, and just, and just visited, it was a super neat day, and, uh, it's exciting to see, so, yeah, it's fun, so.
Yeah.
Um, we have like, uh, we have the, um, Friday Saturday at the community center, I think Mr. O'Toole's gonna be emceeing it that night there, for our band. Um, so we'll be, they'll be playing there that night, I don't know, a lot of stuff going on, the Christmas stuff coming up, so. Yeah, it's just fun, fun time, you know, Thursday, we have a big we're stepping away from interventions for a day, we're gonna have a door, don't tell Shelby, we're gonna decorate doors, you know, card attack, uh, so, uh, each, each class is gonna decorate their own doors and they'll get, they'll, uh, um, judge them, and each, each class will get a prize, so. So, um, fun times coming.
Yeah.
Like Fire Cove is here already here.
Yeah, thank God.
They're gonna go.
Yeah.
Well, Emily, if you have anything left that we didn't see.
Yep, that was all of it. Um, I mean, like Kevin said, our Thanksgiving feast went off with only one hitch. Somebody carrying mashed potatoes and somebody carrying corn ran right into each other, um, yeah, it did make kind of a nice combination, um, but other than that, it was a great day, the kids had a lot of fun, it was wonderful to see them all sit down together. Um, we do some thankles, so every kid writes what they're thankful for, and then they put it on a different kiddo's plate, so they're all reading what somebody else is thankful for. And that's always really fun and exciting to see what kiddos are thankful for, they really do a good job of not just being thankful for their Xbox or whatnot, they're, they're thankful for family, they're thankful for friends, so that's always exciting to read, um. During that same week, we had a couple of really exciting field trips happen, one of them you already heard about. Um, our third and fourth graders went to, um, O S U to watch the women's basketball team, they gathered at Looking Glass at six forty-five in the morning with some pretty tired chaperones with lots of coffee, and they loaded buses and headed on up there. And on the way up, I got a text from one of the teachers with a cry emoji face, that, that one of the kiddos said, this is the furthest I've ever been.
Oh.
I've never been this smart before, so even before getting there, it was already worth it. Um, but then there, um, O S U also put on a big show of the different robots that they have there, and they showed, um, one robot made of free throw, another one twirled a terrible towel and whatnot, and so kiddos coming back were saying, that's what I wanna do, I wanna be an engineer. Um, and before going, they had never seen anything like that, or even knew that that was a career choice that they could choose, um, so that was pretty amazing. Our pre-K was able to buddy up with the high school, um, and they got to go watch Jason Dordy's wood shop class, they've been learning about trees. And so they got to go up and see a bunch of the different machines and whatnot, and they all came back with a little turkey that they got to make with the little cutter and all their fingers, so that was good. Um, but that was really fun, and then, of course, we are in full swing for the Christmas play. It is a Martian Christmas. So if you're interested, it comes the, if the Martians and the children save Christmas. Uh, there's a dress rehearsal next Wednesday at eleven, and then the official show will be at seven o'clock, so feel free to come join us.
Thank you.
All right, um, so we also had our feast, I think I heard one of our accounts, at least, I'm not sure it was the final, was four hundred and seventy people that we fed. Um, it was pretty impressive, how smooth things went. Um, we did run out of green beans, but McGovern saved the day. So we screwed on over to McGovern to get two more cans of green beans and finished out, um, the meal. Uh, second graders got green beans at their feast. Um, but, uh, it was incredibly smooth. We did have paper trays, we'll fix that for next time, cause walking from one end of the campus to the other with hot food on a paper tray didn't quite work, but, um, everyone enjoyed it, we had some really great decorations that were around, um, it was awesome to not have Raptor quite in place yet for that. Um, well, because we had a lot of people on campus, so it was really fun, um. We also have implemented Raptor without too big of a hitch, I feel, pretty successful with that. Um, we have a good routine and plan for our morning arrival time, which is the trickiest part. Um, we had a buzz assembly last week and had some of our guests, uh, R S V P ahead of time, so we could get badges printed for them. We know how to batch print, I guess, and, uh, so you can preload where they're gonna be and what time they're gonna be there, and then they pick up their badge, so there's less waiting. Um, and that's if they've already preloaded their driver's license, um, the big, uh, test will be at our sing-along that will, I think, I don't even, Brockway's probably been doing it, well, they have been doing sing-alongs since they opened, I do know that. But even prior to that at McGovern, they were doing sing-alongs for as long as I can remember, um. We are in need of a trumpet player, so we are reaching out to the high school to see if we have any, um, trumpet players that know some Christmas carols, um, so, but we can get staff involved in that sing-along if you haven't ever been, it's it's pretty amazing event, I'm super excited to be a part of that again. Um, that will happen on Thursday at one fifteen.
So tomorrow or next?
Next Thursday, the last week, we're also gonna have a dress up week then, that's Spirit Week. Um, I guess pajama day has not happened at Brockway for some years, so pajama day will be on Monday the sixteenth. Um, I've already pre-picked my pajama pants, I'm very excited about them, um, and another, um, another thing that our team has really been working hard on is, um, implementing an intervention class, uh, for some of our kindergarten students. So, um, we have kind of rearranged some staffing, um, and we will have to get a few substitutes for some time. But some of our kindergartners are really struggling to, um, gain progress in academics, social, emotional, and behavior this year still, um, it's, you know, into December and they're still struggling, so um, we have created a small class, uh, for part of the school day with one of our pretty skilled, um, teachers uh, to provide some pretty direct instruction for those kids. Um, I've spoken with parents, they're very excited to have their kids be a part of that. Um, it is a trial basis, so we're gonna see how it goes, but, uh, we're hoping to see some big gains for those students.
Yeah. I'm gonna start going first. Um, no, so we had the Thanksgiving Day Parade, um, and that was really fun, I don't, we hadn't done that before, and so the kids, um, it was actually one of our newer teachers this year, um, had the idea and planned it with Norma, and, and they just set the plans, and said, this is what we're doing, it's super, super fun, the kids decorated a balloon and they had it on a stick, and they walked around into the classrooms, and that classroom followed at the end of the line, um. And so, uh, it was fun to see what the kids came up with and the different designs, um, on the balloons, and then we also had a whole our holiday art and craft night, um, and we had a good turnout for that, quite a few families came, um, some former students were there, so that was exciting. Um, and a lot of our staff showed up to help, which was also really exciting that they wanted to be there to help, um, and we have more holiday fun next week, so we have Spirit Week. We're gonna bring back the sing-along to McGovern, but we're gonna start just with our school before we invite families in and, um, get this Raptor stuff figured out first, um. And then we have holiday rotations next week where the kids get to go, um, third graders will go to the fourth grade teacher's classrooms, fourth graders will go to the fifth grade teacher's classrooms, and they'll rotate and do um, holiday themed educational activities. Um, and it's a good way for teachers to connect with some of the other kids, so, um, that's fun, we do that a couple of times, we'll do Steam Day probably in the spring, like we did last year. And then after the break, we'll be focusing on benchmark assessments.
Tim, can I give an update on youth, youth sports program? I gotta call today one, one there.
Yeah.
For, well, Jeff may correct me on this, but fifth and sixth grade football won league and championship.
I did.
Uh, volleyball, there was thirty-six girls out. Uh, third, fourth, and then fifth and sixth were together, they all won championships. And basketball. There's this is over the phone, but I'm, I'm pretty sure I'm right, I think. Uh, there's, so far, there's thirteen teams signed up, that's boys and girls. I think there's four sixth grade teams, uh, and two travel teams. So we have fifteen teams.
Wow.
So far. That's a lot of kids, as I said, one, from the youth sports in our, in our areas, so. But did we, have, have, is there where, have you talked to anybody about Dave about, uh, the junior high league this year about the travel times to the coast, we're trying to keep it more local.
I spoke to, I spoke to Dave about that league, and, and I'm trying to figure out where we landed on.
Yeah.
How we got back into that league. I don't know, Jeff might be able to speak to the
Trying to keep it.
Middle school league, you know, going to North Bend and then Marshville versus finding something more local.
Yeah, we've had those conversations, I haven't been in on all those meetings, but, um, initially, when I went to that first meeting, I think Emily was there as well, we discussed um, being in this league and going to the coast and the long commute, and the concerns that people have of that. Um. Can't remember exactly the rationale for why we didn't adjust and make the change, because we had talked about switching out, and what's the, what's the local league called here? You remember?
Little Fur League.
It's Little Fur, that's right, it's a Little Fur League, we talked about transitioning into that league. Um, and I can't remember the barriers to that that we came up with, but there was some issues that, um, people had some concerns with.
And I know when I sat in on it, it was mostly how much we would have to pay to be in the league.
Something to do with cost.
But, but it, the way I, I'm looking at it, um, and Facebook's are blowing up about it now, you know, with the kids going, getting back at midnight, and you know, wrestling a science law and junior high kids, so, um, I think closer the better, and even if you go to Cottage Road, it's, or North Douglas or somewhere, it's a straight shot at the freeway instead of forty-two, or.
There's less issues with weather probably too.
Yeah, so, and keeping kids in school longer. You know, so it'd be, I think, I think there's a lot of pluses to looking into it.
Yeah.
Cause, uh.
It broke.
It, it broke apart when Roseburg pulled out. That was big, when Roseburg pulled out and then everybody just held it, when all the other characters came together and said, hey, let's just go with our own league. Well, now our league's changed again, so now we can probably go back to, you know, the glide.
Yeah.
I know, I know I had that conversation with Michelle, I believe. She was at the beginning of this year and she was wanting to switch out and there was an issue, um, with that being like the rotation of the seat of the. You know, where they were at in that rotation and it wasn't gonna work and Little Fur wasn't for it and, and so we had some conflict there. She would be able to speak into that.
Yeah.
I remember there was some issues that came on.
Yeah, that, that, that was part of it when, when we talked about it, you know, when they, when they first, when maybe Roseburg would be interested in. Their athletic record, be interested in talking about it, going back to Joe Lane Fremont again.
Yeah.
I mean, it would save them a lot of money.
Yeah, I know from Michelle's perspective, it wasn't for a lack of trying.
Yeah, I'm sure.
You know, what she wanted out and it was, we're trying, she couldn't get it for her.
But it'd be something worth.
Sounds like they are competing, yeah.
Yeah, cause it's, cause the kids get down now and, you know, I got, like, I have a granddaughter doing it now, so. So I get to see it and hear about it, so.
Getting back late.
Yeah.
Trips, missing school, yeah.
Yeah, you know, you don't hear about it in high school, it's just a dorm, but junior high, you know, especially sixth graders.
Yeah, so, listening. I'll reach out to Dave and Michelle as well, and, and Jeremiah.
And then Jeremiah. Roseburg A U C.
Yeah. And like he says, find out what the specifics are, so when, when we said Roseburg pulled out, what?
What, what he did, he said, when they got that new football, not this coast, the last football coach, if I remember right. You wanted more competition, so he sent them all to the six A schools, five and six A.
Oh, that worked out very well.
You know, high burger?
Um, yeah, so, yeah, it didn't work out good, so they're still doing it, I assume, and. Maybe they're ready to switch.
Yep.
Well, knowledge has changed so much since then at that point, really, but.
Yeah.
Well, we're looking at it again.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, you know, it'd be, we'd probably be able to keep more kids in the program. At the junior high level, so.
Yeah, thanks for that, Kurt.
Yeah, thanks, Kurt.
Right, this meeting is adjourned. Our upcoming meeting, uh, we have executives, or it's January eighth, we have executive session at six P M and regular.